So unless everyone needs to, restroom break, we will move right into the notice of a special meeting. The committee of the whole meeting would like to call that meeting to order. The clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
So the petitions and communications, we do have one from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. She does not choose to address the committee but ask that her position be entered into the record as follows. "I am continuously concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem for the Next, are there any other petitions and communications anyone else would like to address this committee? No? All right. So the first item on the agenda, or third I should say, is an ordinance denying ITV3 Incorporated, incorporates, incorporate, someone's wrong, tongue, Inc., thank you, appreciate it. Denying their request to assign cable franchise agreement between City of Urbana and ITV3, Inc., dated December 15, 2014. Denial of ITV3, Inc.'s request to assign and transfer cable franchise agreement to Countrywide Broadband LLC or ITV3 LLC, legal department.
Good evening. For those who are listening in the audience, I'm Jim Simon, city attorney, and I am joined by the UC2B Brain Trust. Paul Hickson on my right and Charlie Smythe on my left, both of whom are on the UC2B Board. At the outset, I will apologize for the volume of information I provided you, but this is a very complex issue which is facing both Champaign, Urbana, as well as the not-for-profit. As you all know, and as I've indicated in prior memoranda, the operator of the UC2B network ITV3, Inc. has announced its intent to sell its rights and interest to the system to an entity called, bear with me, ITV3 LLC. ITV3 LLC is a newly created entity which was created by itself, a newly created entity called Countrywide Broadband LLC. I'll refer to ITV3 LLC and Countrywide together as Countrywide, and the current ITV3 that's operating the system as ITV3. Before you are two distinct and separate issues. They arise out of two separate and distinct agreements. The first arises out of an agreement between ITV3 and the UC2B not-for-profit. They entered into agreement which provided that should ITV3 seek to sell its rights in into the system, that both cities would have a right of first refusal at the same price and terms as offered, in this case, which Countrywide has offered ITV3. The second issue, well, the issue there is whether or not the city wants to exercise its right of first refusal to purchase the ITV3 assets located within Urbana. The second issue and separate issue involves ITV3's request to assign and transfer its obligations and its rights under the Urbana Cable Franchise Agreement with ITV3 to Countrywide. We believe, let me back up, this would require the city's consent. We believe this issue may be moot. We are not sure at this point. We have been advised that Countrywide has applied for and obtained a statewide cable franchise agreement, and therefore they may not need a local franchise agreement. However, they also advise that in the statewide cable franchise arrangement through the statute like AT&amp;T has, they have not included Champaign or Urbana in the list of communities. I suspect that's an administrative task. So right now, there is the current cable franchise, and if it's to be transferred, when I mean cable franchise, I mean the local one, if it's to be transferred to Countrywide, you all will have to approve it. I think it's important to see how we got here and maybe where we're going, and so I want to go through a little bit of the history of UC2B from the beginning. Early on, 2009, the university applied for a federal grant. They also applied for a state grant, and there were local matches which aggregate to about $29 million. With that money, the UC2B consortium, which is comprised of the university, Urbana, and Champaign, went about building the UC2B network, which, in addition to design fiber and equipment, created what we have commonly referred to as the backbone or rings. And the goal was to develop high-speed fiber internet service within the Champaign-Urbana community, and in addition to build out certain low-income census tracts so they could be digitally included and given the opportunity to access high-speed fiber internet. The slide you're looking at here basically discusses the agreement and the goals. And it's, come on. The backbone consists of seven interconnected rings, all of which go through the university. They meet at what are called nodes, and the Brain Trust here can explain what a node is and actually how the system operates. But essentially, three rings were built in Urbana and four rings were built in Champaign, the southwest ring dipping down into Savoy. So that is basically how fiber, which is connected to those rings, how one can transmit signals, whether it be cable ultimately, or internet or telephone across the internet. Again, it all flows through the university. The slide indicates how much fiber was actually constructed with those rings, and from there, fiber to the premises, or commonly referred to as FTP, was strung in the communities identified in the grant, which basically means fiber was run along public right-of-ways in those census tracts, and those individuals or businesses who wanted to connect to the system had an opportunity to do so. The next slide shows a very simplistic schematic of the rings and how they interconnect with the university. This map shows essentially where the rings and a few sub-rings were actually constructed. And as you can see, three are in Urbana, four are in Champaign. I guess the yellow is not coming out very well. Maybe up on the screen up there, it comes out better, but it's not coming out very clear here in the computer. But if you look at the yellow sectors, those are the sectors which were built out using grant funds. I believe the numbers that are circled in red are handholds, being able to access the fiber for repair or expansion where there would be fiber spliced. Anchor institutions were granted the right to tie into the rings so they could access high-speed fiber. By the way, I thank Champaign for the use of their PowerPoint presentation, and this is some of the anchor institutions in Champaign. We have similar institutions, of course, the city, our school, our library, churches, that large hospital up on University Avenue, I don't recall its name, but the large hospital on University Avenue. Businesses are entitled to connect up, and in certain cases, indefensible rights of use were sold to private businesses so they could connect up and use the high-speed fiber network. The consortium decided that these cities and the university did not wish to be in the internet service provider business, and so they decided to form a not-for-profit, UC2B not-for-profit, to take over operation, maintenance, and expansion of the UC2B network. And these are, as of prior to today, the appointees to the UC2B Board. Three from the university, three from the City of Urbana, and three from Champaign, as of today, as I understand it, the board voted. Dr. John Gant has stepped down, and a new chairman will take over, I believe effective Wednesday. So John Kuntz, the vice chair, has moved up, and Charlie has become the vice chair.
John will be here shortly.
Ah. In any event, at some point, the not-for-profit realized they could not generate enough revenue to build out the system as robustly as the communities and the university wished, so it sought a private partner who would make a commitment in exchange for the right to operate the system without a fee to build out, and thus, the ITV3 network was created. Simply put, the system, or this valuable asset consists of four components. The hardware, including the fiber, the software, the rights of use, or IRUs, and of course, the customers, businesses and individual residents who sign up for the system. ITV3 took over the system. It started out with a contract in February, and as some of you probably recall who were here in February 2014, they were looking to the cities to build out, or to provide $15 million in loan through a bond offering, and the cities balked at that, and ITV3 and the not-for-profit took that component out, and thus, the agreement ultimately went into effect in May 2014. Since that time, ITV3 has built out five sectors, four in Urbana, one in Champaign. Regarding which sectors are to be built out, they had a metric in their contract which provided that, and I'll show you a map of the sectors in a minute or two, that if 50% of the residents of a sector gave a firm commitment, essentially signed up, paid a month subscription fee, albeit non-binding, they would be obligated to build out that neighborhood, run fiber up the right-of-way so those residents and businesses could connect. ITV3 committed to support the Community Benefit Fund and has done so. ITV3, however, has developed assets outside of Urbana and Champaign. They've developed assets in Peoria, East Peoria, Pekin, and possibly Morton, I'm not sure about Morton. This is a map which shows the sectors. Again, these are the sectors that were arrived at by ITV3. The yellow, once again, are the sectors that were built out with the grant funds. The green sectors are the sectors which were built out by ITV3. In, at the beginning of this year, in February, ITV announced that it was planning on selling all of its assets, all of its fiber optic internet assets. It was going to get out of the business of providing cable, internet, and telephone service. And Countrywide submitted an offer to purchase. Countrywide is a newly formed organization with four primary management individuals with extensive experience in the cable business, and a fair amount of experience, one or two have fair amount of experience in the fiber optic network. They are funded by two, an investment bank and a venture capitalist. I can't disclose what the asset purchase agreement provides because they have asked everyone to keep that confidential, and obviously, I couldn't put it in a packet of information because then it would be made public. That was a commitment we made. The two commitment letters from the investment bank and the Venture Capital Group likewise are designated confidential, but they have capital financing to go forward with their project. Now, the important aspect about this announcement is it triggers the city's right of first And the city has 30 days to decide whether to exercise the right of first refusal or waive it. That's 30 days from the date that ITV3 and Countrywide provide all the information that the cities request in order to do their diligence to decide whether or not they wish to exercise that agreement and that right. So right away, the cities asked, and the not-for-profit asked for information, some was provided, the asset purchase agreement, the two commitment letters, the resumes of the four individuals that are involved with Countrywide. They did not provide detailed information regarding their financial plans, their financial pro forma, their business plan, how they intended to build out, what priorities they were going to use, and to this day, they have not shared that information with us despite repeated efforts to obtain that information. After back and forth with ITV3, they supplied most of their information. We have some questions, whether some of it is accurate or not, but it's basically enough to give the not-for-profit and the city's knowledge about what they've been doing. We all pretty much know how ITV3 has proceeded in building out both cities. It's been, obviously, five sectors in over a year, has been a little less than robust. Why, I don't know, but that's where it's, where we're at at this point. In April, ITV3 submitted a FCC Form 394 requesting the right to transfer the cable agreement to Countrywide, which triggered 120-day, excuse me, clock in which the city had the right, an opportunity to either consent or withhold consent for that transfer. The federal statute allowed the cities to ask for information regarding the transaction, and Countrywide provided some very generalized information, but again withheld information. As I said, the right of first refusal, which arises out of the ITV3 not-for-profit agreement, essentially contains two important pieces. One, the right, exercise the right, and two, to purchase it within a period of time. Unfortunately, we do not have a purchase offer, or I should say ITV3 did not receive a purchase offer just for the Urbana or just for the Urbana-Champaign assets. So if you decided today, yes, we'll exercise the right of first refusal, we don't know what we would write on the check. They all, Countrywide also did not provide all the information that has been requested. So to get past this logjam of information, it was suggested that the not-for-profit and ITV3, ITV3, excuse me, Countrywide negotiate an agreement that would be acceptable to the cities, the not-for-profit, and Countrywide. We believe that Countrywide's financial backers would not approve an agreement on the Countrywide side if they felt that Countrywide could not abide by the agreement. So negotiations occurred, and a number of weeks ago, a memorandum of understanding between the not-for-profit and Countrywide was approved by the not-for-profit board, subject to the city's review and approval of that memorandum of understanding. You have in your information package, the, that particular MOU with my comments, Fred Stavens for Champaign, if you're looking for that, that would be my exhibit 10 on the material I sent out to you. Fred Stavens, Lisa Power for the university, and Dave Kerchak for the not-for-profit had concerns about the agreement as well. So the cities and the university directly, albeit through the not-for-profit, actively began negotiating and trying to work out something with Countrywide, and those negotiations have been ongoing. These are, this slide shows the parties who are involved in the negotiation, and as you can see, it's a diverse group of parties, and, which obviously, when you have this many parties, tends to make the negotiations complex. These agreements between various parties are all implicated in whatever agreement is reached between the not-for-profit and Countrywide that is acceptable to the cities and the university. When we started out, the cities and the university were concerned with these eight general areas of discussion and of negotiation, but as time progressed, we began, on our side of the negotiations, to focus on a remedy. Countrywide agreed to build out so many homes, and that's defined in the memorandum, each year starting in 2017. But the cities and the not-for-profit wanted a remedy in the event that Countrywide did not meet its build-out requirements, so we began focusing on the remedy. The remedy, we actually, Friday, had a major, I would say, breakthrough, and we're very, very close, I believe, to an agreement. The remedy that is provided would be, within 90 days of signing a revised memorandum of understanding, the cities would have a right to purchase the assets that were acquired and installed using grant funds, as well as the IRU rights, customers, equipment, et cetera, for $8.2 million. That was a negotiated amount. 7.5 was an original number, and then Countrywide informed us that there was about $800,000 in new equipment. I think it's, some of it's referred to as GPON, and I can't really tell you what GPON is, other than it's pretty state-of-the-art equipment to help operate the fiber system. We have 90 days from the date that new MOU is executed to notify Countrywide of a decision to exercise the purchase right. If the cities exercise the purchase right, it must close by year-end this year. If we don't notify Countrywide, or if we do and fail to close by year-end, then the full terms of the memorandum of understanding will take effect. There is another purchase option later on, starting January 1, 2020, and that comes about in the event that Countrywide fails to meet 30% of the aggregate build-out requirement through 2019, and there's a table in the MOU. And then that right, again, arises at the end of 2020, if they fail to meet 19, 2021, if they fail to meet 2020, et cetera. And what that purchase is, is we have 90 days from January 1 to notify them of an intent to purchase. At this point, a closing date has not been included in the memorandum, and the parties will need to work that out. The purchase price for the assets would be the market value of the IRU as determined by an independent expert appraiser in that area, agreed to by both sides, and then the actual cost of the construction that added on to the system once Countrywide had taken over. So that's where we are. We aren't, we haven't reached a full agreement. I believe this, earlier this evening, Countrywide and the not-for-profit and the cities recognized that a good part of the current ITV3 agreement would continue, except where those terms conflicted with the terms in the MOU, and once everything is wrapped up in terms of the MOU and the clock starts ticking, the parties will work on reducing all of this to a final formal agreement that not only contains the terms of the MOU, but those terms in the ITV3 not-for-profit agreement, which are not in conflict with the MOU, plus other normal terms, notices of default, rights to care, governing law, force majeure clauses, all those kinds of things that, you know, people often refer to as boilerplate. Now, as I also said, the cable agreement issue may be moot because we have been told that Countrywide has obtained a state franchise. However, at this point, they have not indicated to us formally that they are withdrawing their FCC Form 394 or extending the time. So for the moment, as we sit here today, what I recommend is action, same action that was essentially taken by Champaign's council last Tuesday, I believe, and that would be to approve the longer ordinance, which is item 3, not item 4 on your agenda, which essentially takes no, makes no decision on whether or not to exercise the right of first refusal, but in essence, tentatively denies the request to transfer the cable agreement. It's written as, "without prejudice," because the hope is by August 1, when, that's the last date you can act unless Countrywide withdraws its FCC Form 394 or grants more time, that's the last date you will have to act, otherwise, it will be deemed the council has consented. And I believe an agreement will be reached, probably in the next couple, excuse me, the next couple of days. And as we proceed, I will keep you posted, and if we arrive at a new MOU, we will shoot that onto you. Any questions?
Eric?
So we have a local fiber provider, Volo. And where, where do they figure in the community-wide provision of fiber?
As I understand it, they are laying their own fiber through our rights-of-way, and they are providing service. And I believe, I think Charlie or Paul can answer whether they, they're providing any service through the UC2B network.
The only thing I would add is that there's really a two-pronged approach that the not-for-profit has adopted here. And path one is to basically form a better agreement with Countrywide than we had with ITV3, a significantly better agreement. Path two, though, is the opportunity to purchase, as Jim was explaining, the resources, and that's a contingent timeframe. So we would, once this agreement is consummated, then immediately put out, the not-for-profit would put out an RFP to find other vendors who were interested. Volo, as well as any other local or non-local providers, would be free to respond to that RFP.
So, so, so in your opinion, this doesn't provide any ability for this larger company that's coming from outside to effectively crush or squeeze out local providers?
No. It does, it does not crush out, crush local providers.
Okay, and that's not, I'm sure that's not an intended consequence, but you're confident that would not be an unintended consequence either?
Well, no more than the creation of the UC2B project when the BTOP-funded things began, which aggregated resources and, and the only other thing I would say, slight modification to what Jim said, because I was campus CIO when... to what Jim said, because I was campus CIO, when the BTOP grant was awarded, it was always the intent that the UC2B project would build the fiber rings and establish basic community connections for hospitals, MTD, MetCAD, et cetera, educational institutions, but that we would need to find a private partner for that build-out. So it wasn't that we, we tried to go it on our own and couldn't, and then turned to a not-for-profit, or turned to a commercial partner. It was always the intent to have a commercial partner. There was a RFP process. We received a number of respondents, and at the time, in 2014, it was the opinion of that board, the then-current board, and the experts in the community, that the best one was ITV3.
So I guess, just as long as we're going to continue to, I mean, I broadly speaking, I favor this, it's going to accelerate the build-out. But, but I just want, I'm really concerned that, that we maintain a space for local providers. And I'll just tell you, my, my individual experience is that I couldn't get connectivity through ITV3, and Volo provided it to me. So I, and so if, if there was not a space for Volo or for companies like that, I would be without fiber now.
Yeah, in addition to Volo and ITV3 providing fiber in parts of the community, there's also Pavlov, which has done an extensive amount of work in providing fiber to multi-dwelling, the MDUs that are referred to in these, in these agreements. And so substantial number of apartment complexes are hooked up via Pavlov. And that actually has caused some problems with the ITV3 agreement and how the neighborhood sectors are drawn and how you sign up customers and things like that. So one of the things that's being done in the, in the new agreement with Countrywide is to clean up that language, come up with a new, a new formulation for how you design those neighborhoods. So that's something we're, we're very close to agreement on. So as Paul said, we've got a two-pronged approach here. We've got an agreement. We're working on with Countrywide, the new company, but at the same time, we're also going to have the ability to go out and shop the network if we want to, with yet another provider, maybe get an even better deal. So we had a really good point, as Paul said, we should be able to nail things down. One of the hang-ups this week is that we're missing, their attorney is on vacation this week, so some of this won't get finalized, but we've got about two weeks till August 1. So I think there'll be plenty of time to, to nail down the memorandum of understanding and get it, get it to council. And so as Jim has recommended in the, in the motions that go to council, I would make a small caveat, I'd make a very small change to that. I think we should send them to council without any recommendation, up or down, just simply so that they're on the agenda, so that we can take action. But I don't think we need to recommend anything in particular at this time. So a very small change to what Jim is recommending would be my, my opinion.
Nothing precludes Volo or Pavlov or any other internet provider, internet service provider from, you know, installing fiber in our right-of-way. The limitation is the physical three-dimensional space of our rights-of-way. And the system is intended to ultimately become an open access system, and at some point in time, others will have the right to tie in to the system at a level 2 or a level 3 operation, tie directly into the rings or just tie into fiber that is run down, as I like to put it, a street. I liken the design of this whole system to our sewer design, and we've all had an education on the design and nomenclature of Urbana Sewer System.
Diane?
As I read through this packet, a lot of the back-and-forth dealt with the failure of the, the Countrywide to provide the information the cities and the not-for-profit were asking for. So are you saying that you think within two weeks that you guys are going to be satisfied that Countrywide has the operational, financial, technical ability to expand the network in the way we want it expanded?
Well, let's, let's understand a little bit about their reticence in providing information. As we've indicated, the reason, one of the, or the main reason we have this purchase option within so many days after signing the memorandum of understanding is, so we have an opportunity to see if possibly there's a better provider out there. And so Countrywide understandably doesn't want us to use their information to shop information they have spent many hours, many dollars developing, complex, highly confidential proprietary information. So we all understand that. But by the same token, we also know they have to atone to a lender and an investor, and those people are not going to let Countrywide sign an agreement that they can't abide by. So if we believe that if they are willing to sign an agreement that is acceptable to the cities, they will have the capacity, financial, technical, staffing, to carry out that which they promise. If they don't, in the end of 2019, January 1, 2020, we will have a purchase option. And we have set a low bar intentionally. We want them to succeed. And unlike ITV3, they have what one might call skin in the game. They're borrowing money. They have third parties who are investing. They're going to want to be paid back, and the investors want a return on their investment. So they clearly want to make money, and there's nothing wrong with that. But by making money, they have to build out the system because they have to reach the customers and they have to get subscribers, and that way they make their money.
And we're setting benchmarks, and there are remedies if they don't meet the benchmarks?
Yeah, there are benchmarks. They're not in the MOU. I circulated with my comments, the exhibit, I think it was number 10, but we've had many iterations of remedies, and I think, and Countrywide has negotiated in good faith on all of that. And I think we have probably, in terms of remedies, for failure to build out, about as best a remedy as we're going to be able to do. You know, we can't, we're not in the business of trying to break Countrywide's back. We want them to succeed.
Well, everyone wants something to succeed. I can't tell you how many people come up to me all the time, asking when they can get, you know, the internet, and at the same breath, then they talk about how they have to give a credit card upfront, and their sector is never going to meet the 50% requirement. And there are a lot of neighborhoods where that'll never happen. So I just don't want us to go down that path again. That was just crazy. And, and really ITV3 was basically flipping the system, is what it turned out to be, I think. So, so are we guaranteed that, and I know they haven't shared their business plan and for proprietary reasons, but is it reasonable to expect that people won't be faced with this same barrier? And it's a barrier.
I mean, we're hoping that. Now, there are actually two metrics built into the memorandum of understanding. One is they have to pass a certain number of homes each year. They have to select those homes, but they also have a, they've lowered the ITV3 percentage to 45%. I mean, I realize it's only a 5% drop, but they have to be able to build out in an orderly manner. They have hired all, virtually all of ITV3 staff, and they have committed to expanding that staff.
ITV3 said they had 52 employees. Does that, is that Peoria, East Peoria, Pekin, plus Champagne-Urbana? That doesn't seem.
I, I don't, I, you'd have to ask Countrywide that or Charlie. And Mike Smeltzer, who was also on the UC2B board, has joined us. Mike is, should we say, the architect of the grant and the design of the UC2B system.
Who would know the answer to her question specifically?
Countrywide.
Mike, you said you know?
That's their total employee count for all of the communities, I suppose.
And so the, the reformulation of the sector-by-sector rollout will be a little bit different. The apartment buildings will be counted a little different, apartments and businesses will be counted a little bit differently with a certain number of residences to be passed every year. The goal here is over a five-year period, that they will pass basically through the entire community of 22,000 residences, as we calculate it, as of Urbana and Champagne. So, so that's the goal. Whether, you know, we hope they succeed. There's no perfect guarantee here, short of the cities actually developing their own utility and going out and doing it on the taxpayers' dollar. That's the only way we can personally guarantee connecting every home. That's my opinion, okay? But if we're going to work with the private sector, we have to work with a certain amount of, of trust with, with, with the private partners. We don't know their full backgrounds necessarily. We don't know their business plan because it's proprietary and so on, and, and that's their right. But we're going to, you know, we have, we have a, we have a mechanism, and it's a better mechanism than we've had in the past. Whether, you know, it's not perfect, it doesn't have as strong a teeth, I'm sure, as people would like. But again, as Jim said, they've got money on the line, and they've taken out loans to get this done.
And this will be the first build-out they've done?
Yes, it is, yes.
As Countrywide?
Yeah, basically, but basically, like, they're purchasing an existing company that's been doing this. And so they're going to take a new, you know, they're going to expand the marketing, that's what they tell us. They're going to change the way they go after customers, they're going to be more aggressive, things like that. So proof is in the pudding. So, you know, we'll have to, you know, if we go that route with them, we'll have to give them a chance. If we go, and, and the other thing about this agreement is that we have, we'll have 90 days here to go out and see if there's somebody else who thinks they can come in and do a better job.
I think that's.
And that's, that's an interesting option that we've got here. And so we'll be, we've got a lot of work to do in the next 90 days.
Can I make one more comment? I had, I've had a number of conversations with residents along Florida Avenue who've had their front lawns repeatedly torn up by various fiber optic installations, one, at least three, three or four times, separate times. Companies have come in and torn up the lawns on, both in the right-of-way and on the other side of the sidewalk, the sidewalk itself. And, and Florida Avenue is one of these main conduits, if you will, for fiber. And what can we build into these agreements to protect homeowners in some of these main streets from being repeatedly undergoing this kind of disruption?
Yeah, that's, that's what I've, I've mentioned a few times, that we need to develop a dig-wants policy.
Right.
And those policies exist in other communities. We, as a council, need to probably ask staff to investigate that and, and bring back some recommendations to council on how to execute that.
Well, I mean, they're easy to do when you're building a new road or putting it in a new road.
New road, or even if one company's going in, there are provisions in how you do dig-wants so that others can come in and use the same infrastructure.
Okay, well, we should really look into that because it was a mess. It's a mess on Florida Avenue.
Okay, all right.
There is a problem with that, though.
The mayor wants to speak, please go right here, Mayor.
You said that Countrywide had gotten a state franchise. Could you explain what that means for this project?
Yes, they have, you can, you can, you can develop cable television in the state of Illinois in one of two ways. Comcast used one approach by going community to community to negotiate cable franchise agreements. AT&amp;T didn't want to do that, and a bill was sponsored, which allowed the entities to get a state franchise. So technically, they only had to, you know, create one application, and they would negotiate one agreement, rather than however many communities they wish to serve. And that's the route that AT&amp;T went. So they, they have the legal right to build out what they build out in any community in the state, but apparently, they must list in their franchise, state franchise agreement, the communities they want to build out. And I'm, and I haven't studied that legislation, but I am sure there is a provision that allows them to add on and add on as, as one, as AT&amp;T, for that matter, proceeds from one community to another. And I don't think it is that great a process for Countrywide to add Champagne-Urbana.
Well, would we want to be added, or would we rather do it individually with them?
I don't think we have, we have the right to say whether we can or can't be added.
So does that sort of destroy our bargaining power in some way?
Well, obviously, we, we may lose our, the right, the power to consent or withhold our consent. And it depends on where they're at. At this point, we, we have a time clock ticking because, as far as I know, Urbana has not been added, and Countrywide has not withdrawn their FCC Form 394 notice, nor have they agreed to extend the time. So we can, if you want, you can deny the cable franchise on August 1, and no matter what they do, if you don't want to grant it, I mean, that, that's your decision. If you don't want to give the consent, they will get it through, I guess you might say, the back door through a state franchise.
I think Bill was, Mayor, will you finish?
Well, I, I just wonder why we're going through all this, if they can just go ahead and get it done anyway.
Well, we did not know up until Friday that they had a state, and, and as I say, I've not verified whether in fact they have a state franchise. They have represented that they do.
All right, so Bill was actually next to being.
So thanks for all your work on this. I know it's a really complicated process and a lot of back and forth. For me, I was a little frustrated that we couldn't see the asset, asset purchase agreement because it seems like that's what we would be, have the potential to buy in our right of first refusal, and we can't see what we're going to buy, but now at least we have a price for what we can't see. So, because I guess the asset purchase agreement would be the same price in terms that we would make our right of first refusal.
Let me clarify that. Because Countrywide made no specific offer to purchase Urbana assets, we don't have a number that is based on the terms of the not-for-profit ITV3 agreement. We all asked for what that number should be, and they provided us a one-page, very summarized valuation of the Champagne-Urbana assets, and they said they were worth about 22.5 million. We've asked, how did you come to that number? And they said that's, well, they labeled it replacement cost. We don't know what they, you know, what value they put on the actual hard assets, or how they computed their labor costs. And they, we've asked for that, and they have not provided for that. However, the interesting thing in their replacement value, as my memorandum indicates, and there's an exhibit on what their value is, and that is exhibit 8, you will see that that included 17, roughly 17.5 million for assets that the city and the university, both cities and the university, already own. So why would we be repurchasing things we've already owned? So in our estimation, that brought the value down to about 5 million, maybe a little more. Their response was, well, ITV3's response, not Countrywide's response, was, well, you have the IRU, and that's valuable. Well, but they didn't include the IRU in their valuation, so all, and they haven't given us a number for the IRU. So, and indeed ITV3 has said, we're not going to sell to you unless you give us 22 million bucks.
Let me complete my thought, and I do have a question. So since we don't have the asset purchase agreement to look at, and this is a purchase of assets of ITV3 Inc. by ITV3 LLC or Countrywide, what I want to know is what is included in those assets as far as contractual agreements? I know in several places, they said they intend to assume certain agreements. Have you guys seen the asset purchase agreement?
Yes.
And are those assumptions within that?
They're, they're within the asset purchase agreement. What they are purchasing is 100% of ITV3's assets, which include contract rights that ITV3 has, and equipment, fiber. and equipment, fiber, customers, customer counts, IR, and the big one, the IRU. But that also includes the assets located outside of the grant-funded assets and what was transferred to ITV3. It obviously includes ITV3's expansion in, in the five sectors. It also includes the new equipment ITV3.
And it does include the responsibility to, to contribute to the community fund and the other responsibilities?
Well, the MOU.
That were included in the.
What the MOU will include is payment to the community benefit fund beyond what ITV3 has agreed to as well as an additional payment for a period of time to the not-for-profit. So, it will have some minimal ongoing operating capital.
Okay, and then I had a couple other questions. So, also, I saw that they wanted to extend the exclusive use of fiber to 2022 instead of 2019.
Yes.
Do you know if there's any other companies in town that were kind of including this in their business plan that when 2019 came along, they were going to start using fiber? Is that something a company, a local company would do?
We've not seen anyone else's business plan.
So, I mean, the way it was, was you could kind of depend on this fiber being available in 2019 and all of a sudden, we're moving that three years out if we agree to that.
I mean, we realized that and that was part of the. That, we realized that that was part of the negotiation. But Countrywide would have no incentive to build out past 2019 if they're not going to have the exclusive use of the IRU through 2022. So, that's one problem. And the other problem is we have a choice. We have actually three choices. And one of them is not in our hands. It's in the not-for-profit's hands. If the not-for-profit doesn't reach different terms of agreement and ITV3 and Countrywide want to go through with this, then they will take over the agreement with the not-for-profit with all its pluses and with all its minuses. The biggest one being the build-out requirement. They can agree to the terms of the MOU. They are giving, in this agreement, that it's not completed, you've not seen it yet because they haven't and the not-for-profit haven't, hasn't signed off on it. But if they do, and I'll get it out to you as quickly as I can when that happens, they, we have a couple of spots in the agreement where we have a very valuable right, the right to purchase it and find somebody else to hopefully run it better. I mean, this whole landscape in the last couple of years and public-private partnerships has changed drastically. When we went the ITV3 route, it was very limited. And now, this has become a very accepted business model for communities.
Okay, and then I think.
Could I add one additional thought? And that is, I think, one of the reasons that that timeframe had to be pushed out was in recognition of the slow start out of the gate that ITV3 had done in its build-out. And basically, Countrywide needed a comparable amount of time to meet the 22,000 residents passed.
Okay, 20, is, oh, okay, yeah, I think it was 11,000 by 2019, 22,000 by. So, that, it looks like the projections and goals are kind of 3,000 to 4,000 houses passed per year over the next few years. How's that compared to what ITV3 did in the past year?
It's my understanding that the UC2B consortium passed 4,800 homes and ITV3 passed 1,200 homes. So, there's about 6,000.
So, those five neighborhoods only had 1,200 homes?
About, I think a total of about 6,000 homes have been passed.
Yeah, I should add, there are four, the four Urbana neighborhoods of about 400, 450 neighborhoods, units, residential units each that were passed. And then in, what ITV3 has been doing is actually converting the existing BTOP-funded neighborhoods to its own system. So, actually, they've converted the 11 original? 12 original, yeah, they're in the process of converting the 12 original neighborhoods to their high-speed network. So, the one in Champaign is actually, it's an overlay of their equipment on top of the existing BTOP equipment that was there. And they've actually repeated that in a number of the other grant-funded neighborhoods that were done. So, actually, it's more than one. So, it's not exactly a new rollout like the four Urbana neighborhoods, but it is a, a completely upgraded system and it's more than one of them. The map really should have four colors on it instead of the three that they currently use. And, and so, it's a little confusing how it's laid out. So, but I think they have, I think they've converted 10 of the existing 12, if I remember correctly from the last conversation with Levi.
So, it sounds like we should expect maybe a, at least double, maybe triple to four times as fast as what has been happening. I understand it's really a big deal to put underground infrastructure. It's not like stringing a cable in your backyard and hooking it up to your house.
It took about four months to get the four neighborhoods, more or less. So, if you figure if they get a good start, they use a little more crews, they should be able to get 12 or 12 to 15 neighborhoods a year if they're going full-tilt and they get people signing up. You know, part of the issue with ITV3 is a very non-aggressive marketing plan.
Okay, and thanks for, for the recent developments too with the different purchase options. I think that'll help. The only thing I'd emphasize again is just kind of this awareness that it is an asset purchase agreement and it's not outright buying of the company where they would automatically assume all the responsibilities in contract law from what I understand. My, my contract law is nearly as good as anybody else's.
An asset purchase agreement is, as you say, and as the name implies, is purchasing the assets. If they were buying the stock in ITV3 Inc., then they would be buying the assets and the liabilities. And typically, the purchase price for a, the stock is lower than an asset purchase because you are purchasing the liabilities, which are risk. Why they structured their agreement, it's very common, as long as you have the funding, to do an asset purchase agreement. They are purchasing, they need the contract rights frankly. They, they, there are, there have been some fiber swaps that have allowed ITV to do things that they would not be able to do without the fiber swap. There's a contract between the university and I think it's ICN to run fiber up to Cermak Avenue in Chicago, which I guess is ICN's connector to the rest of the world. And there's apparently some redundancy through St. Louis and Indianapolis. So, if one of these concentrated, I'll call them headquarters, goes down, the internet doesn't go down. It just shifts automatically over to one of the other redundancies.
So, Delis?
I guess my, my questions are going to be, I think, a lot simpler. For all my own just clarification, when we're talking about these agreements, we're talking about these, these franchise agreements allowing the company to, to inset their programming and their services on our cables, is that correct? Does the city and the university and Champaign own the cable that's in the ground itself?
Do they own, I didn't.
Own the cable that is in the ground? Do we retain the cable?
We don't, we don't own, for instance, Comcast. The cable, the fiber optic that, that the cities and the university and the equipment the cities and the university own, they will continue to own. The not-for-profit, when, when the transition agreement was reached between the consortium and the not-for-profit, ownership of the sys, of the hard assets was not included in that transfer. In fact, that was one of the things that you all stressed very hard. And we incorporated that in the agreement. So, we own just, obviously, it's the grant-funded assets. We don't own the fiber that ITV3 has installed. We don't own the equipment that ITV3 has installed or, you know, the equipment that we had installed, the equipment that replaced that, ITV3 owns that.
Alright, so, that answers part of my question, I think. The second one was, when we negotiated a separate contract and we did not, when, when, let's see, when, when we were negotiating the franchise in an earlier state, one of the things that we were able to secure by having our own agreement, which was unique in the state, was higher levels of funding for the PEG channels in support of the PEG. What's, what will happen if there's a straight, a state blanket franchise adopted at the state level? Will that unique situation for us evaporate under the new conditions?
I don't know because I don't know what the state legislation provides for PEG channel funding. Right now, it's 2% and I believe it's 5% for the rest of the cable operation. Now, mind you, so far, I think we've derived maybe $100 out of our PEG and franchise. Not sure the exact amount, but, but it's new. I mean, the cable has just pretty much started up within the last year. And I'll, I'd have to look at the statute. We have a 2% PEG, Champaign has a 1.5% PEG, but they got an upfront contribution from Comcast. One of the problems that a lot of the newer companies have with local franchises is they have to reach agreement on virtually the same terms as Comcast because the state law has a competitive, federal law does too, have competitive equity provisions. You can't give one cable company a leg up on the other. And in fact, when we negotiated the ITV3 cable contract, Comcast came in and said, well, we want those provisions too that you gave to ITV3. And we said, that's fine. However, you've got to take all the rest that's in the ITV3 cable franchise. And we haven't heard from them since.
I guess my concern is that we would lose whatever percentage we might have gained by that franchise agreement.
It's my understanding that the state franchise lets you come in, but you have to honor the rates that other local providers are having to pay. So, in other words, they'd have to meet the 7% even with the state, state franchise. But that's something Jim can check out.
Yeah.
But that was my understanding. Last time we tackled this, that's what I thought we were at.
So, we were, we wouldn't lose anything?
That, that's my understanding.
If that's the case, yes. Eric?
So, do I understand that we really don't understand how they will prioritize where they build out? That that's, or do we understand that? Or do we have an agreement with that?
The, there's a redefining of how the sectors are counted in terms of residences, businesses, and apartment complexes for the formula to get to the 22,000 build-out over five years. They will, they're going to do a different kind of marketing approach. They're going to start looking more at the, you know, they've told us they intend to use the data that's there about who's signed up to try to target neighborhoods and work within specific neighborhoods more aggressively. So, again, it will be signup-driven, but with a, a different formula underneath and a smaller percentage, not much smaller, but it's 45%. And, and again, you know, once that threshold is met, they have to build.
So, so it still will be that people will make a deposit?
There'll be some ki, they will have some kind of mechanism for, for signing people up. The issue with the deposit was, it wasn't so much a deposit. You didn't make, you didn't put any money down. They simply used the credit card to verify that you are a real person because they had a scam in one of the communities that they were working in where some neighborhood kids literally beat the system by signing everybody up in the neighborhood. And you could just go in and, you know, literally, they just signed everybody up and with no proof that the person actually on the other end was saying, yes, I really do want it. So, so the credit card is simply an easy mechanism to verify that the person on the, on the signup end is really wanting to at least make an initial commitment to purchase.
So, so the commitments that people have, have made, and so many of which are outstanding now, those, actually, those cards have not been processed, is that correct?
Right, that's correct, yes. And those people who have put down deposits, and there were, there are people who have put down deposits, those are still in the system. Some have been paid back, some people have left the community, some people have moved and so on. But, but that money does get credited to your first bill. And they are using that data to help, they will be using that data to help identify those sectors that they, they need to target first.
So, so in the future, people will not need to make deposits? They can simply provide the information?
They're not making, the, the, there were two mechanisms. Early on, there was this, this signup process before we even had ITV3 as a partner. There was this process of, of committing. That was to actually go after Google or another, what was the, Gigabit squared or something?
Right.
There was that idea of getting commitment. The ITV3's approach has been to, to, to do the neighborhood signups to reach the 50% threshold that they had. They simply wanted a credit card on files. They knew who, that you are a real person and you were at least committing initially to build out. They never charged anything to that credit card. And, and you still need some, you know, for signing people up, you need some kind of mechanism to make sure that people are, are really wanting to sign up.
If I can ask one other question. Does this company actually managing broadband anywhere?
It's a newly created company. One of the individuals was involved in the development of the broadband network in Highland, Illinois, which I understand is quite a bit south. The president of the company was a, an operating officer and general counsel to Charter Communications. And, and they have, you know, these people have experience primarily in cable, but cable and high-speed fiber as well. They themselves have not, as a company, Countrywide has, have not built out a fiber optic system like we have or added on. They were just organized, oh, I don't know, at the beginning of the year, I guess, or end of last year.
And Eric, Countrywide and ITV3 found each other independently of any involvement by the not-for-profit city of Champaign or city of Urbana?
I had a couple of questions before we go back to around again. So, I saw Goldman Sachs is involved in this, they're one of the investors or something like that, is that correct?
Yes.
And how are they involved? They're investing into, they are loaning money to Countrywide or something?
I don't recall. I think they, they are a lender. I don't recall which one. Seaport Capital is the other. I saw it on Champaign's presentation, so I assume somebody made it public. It was stated in their meeting, so I can disclose those people. I can't disclose the actual terms. I've seen the commitment letters. One of them was unsigned and we were concerned about that. And they substituted, Countrywide substituted a signed commitment letter and I forget which one it is. But one of them, I think Goldman is going to be a lender and they have structured their financing.
So, the other question that I have is, just from a clarity standpoint, the fiber that is in the ground, we own, the cities and the university still own some of those, the fiber optics as well as some of the equipment. But there were some things that ITV had to replace and things like that. But, so there was a transfer of ownership of some of the fiber or something like that to ITV3 at some point?
No.
No, never?
What was transferred was ITV3's right to use the system.
Okay.
It's called an IRU.
Alright, so, I guess I don't quite understand then, well, before I go to that, the build-out, which was supposed to include like low-income areas and all that kind of stuff? And since we don't have any sort of projected layout or plan that Countrywide wants to do, we have no way to ensure that they're going to continue the build-out and to address the connectivity for low-income areas?
We don't know what their plan is. They're committed to building the entire city. We can't guarantee other than exercising a purchase right. My suspicion. My suspicion, and I think Charlie and Mike Smelter and Paul know more about this than I do, but my guess is we could not, very likely, other than Comcast, which is already here, find a high-speed fiber company that will absolutely guarantee a build-out of both cities completely. I mean, there has to be a market for it. It, it wouldn't make sense for them to spend a couple of million dollars to build out neighborhoods, because the return on investment initially is slow.
I understand it. So, the ITV3 is basically selling now this, whatever portions they have for $8.3 million, is that what?
And their right to use, the use, use and control the UC2 network. They are selling the right to operate, maintain, and expand.
So, we gave them the right now, they're selling it for $8.3 million?
Yes, they are. No, there's, there, we have the right to purchase it back for 8.2. They're selling it for a, a different number to Countrywide.
So, we gave it to them, and they're going to sell it back to us for $8.3 million?
Yes.
And who was on that committee that gave it to them? These people that was listed up there? Okay, so, who owns ITV3 right now?
Let's back up just a second. I just wanted to clarify that the cities and the university own the original B-top, provided fiber ring, the seven rings, and the equipment that runs that. And the dozen or so neighborhoods that were built out, that's all fiber owned by the consortium and handled by the not-for-profit. The additional assets that have been put in the ground by, and the equipment added to the network by ITV3, the IRUs that have been developed, and the business relationships and all those, those sorts of things, that's what they're offering to sell us back. So, so it's not, they were buying, yeah, yeah, we're probably buying, buying back some of the IRU stuff, but that was a risk that we knew going in, as I recall, because I was sitting on the other side of this. I wasn't a member of that committee, but asking that same question that you've just asked essentially, you know, why, why are we putting ourselves in a position of doing exactly this and not building it ourselves as a pri, as a utility, a city and university-owned utility, which was an option that we, that the councils rejected several years ago. So, that's water under the bridge. That was a risk we were, we knew we were going to have to take if we wanted a private-public partnership. So, ITV3, Inc., is owned by the Hoagland family video. They have restructured their, their corporation now. And, and, and it's no longer a subsidy under that family-owned business, but actually a piece of, it's like, they've restructured it so it's a piece of, and a sort of a standalone company, is the way I understand it. Is that, yeah, so, yeah, so, so, yes, that the stock and whatever is, is owned by the Hoagland family?
Yes.
The Hoagland family that owns Family Video, but they've now created it as an entity of its own so that they can sell it off.
Diane, did you have something else?
Let me try to further help you out, Aaron.
I get it.
What we are buying, huh?
I understand now.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
To your knowledge, do you know if Countrywide is buying any other systems anywhere in the country?
I can't.
Is Countrywide buying any other systems in the country, or is this it?
I.
None to my knowledge.
Okay. So, they can focus their efforts on this particular system?
Well, here's how I understand ITV1 about this. They worked with, I believe it was Royal Canadian Bank, and they let it be known, because we learned, partly from the grapevine, let it be known that they are looking to sell their rights and interests in the system. Dr. John Gant was at a conference, I want to say in Austin, Texas, and people were coming up to him and said, I understand you're selling, or they're selling the system. And upon exploration with ITV3, they told us in February that, yes, that Countrywide, apparently, they were out of a number of suitors, were the ones that were most attractive to ITV3. Why they were the most attractive, we don't know what ITV3 was looking for, but they ended up being the one they wanted to go down the road with.
Okay.
Mike, I'm sorry, were you done, Diane?
I guess I am. Well, I just want a big picture. You know, when we first started talking about this four or five years ago, we could say, well, we're one of a dozen gigabit communities in the country. Where do we stand now?
One of several hundred.
We're one of several hundred? Okay. So, every day, we don't do something? We're kind of falling, maybe not behind, but we're certainly not keeping up with the PEG?
Yeah.
Still ahead, we have a ring that most other communities don't have.
I mean, that, a, a lot of these private partners have gone in to operate a system that has been built out in smaller communities, or they've gone the Google route, where they've just turned everything over to Google and say, have at it as you want to have at it. We have, you know, probably one of the, from what people have told me, one of the most sophisticated systems in the country. Obviously, these communities have become gigabit communities because there have been demands for high-speed fiber. And that doesn't mean we're being left behind, but we have to find the partner, and we hope Countrywide is, or not-for-profit has to find the partner to build it out.
Due to the sophistication of the network and the location of the university in participation, particularly of computer science and engineering in experiments on high speed, this is also one of the far fewer U.S. ignite communities.
Fifteen, one of fifteen.
Yeah, so we're one of 15 in that. So, the resources being used in one sense. If you think of the whole number of anchor tenants that are already taking full advantage of this, and the ways in which experiments are being done on new ways to do sharing and even diagnostic work of medicine or real-time communication and virtualization, we are leading. Where we're not leading is getting it into.
The homes.
The homes.
Yeah.
And, you know, no one could be more frustrated about that than me.
I'm sure.
We should, we should note that Paul is one of those whose sort of neighborhood has been left out as neighborhood around him isn't built. So, I, I would also add that the system, as ITV3 has reconstructed it, is capable of being bumped up to 10 and 100 gig with basically just swaps of pieces of equipment in the, in the, in the network closets. So, it is a much more upgradable network, from what I understand today.
Mike?
So, not so much questions, just as much as a couple of comments. First, I just want to say thank you to you all and the work you've done over the years to put this asset in place. And also, probably more importantly, for realizing that a collaboration of governments is not the way to monetize the asset, that it should be in private hands to be monetized. I think that another thing that we all ought to keep in mind here is, while we feel like we have not so much information about the asset purchase agreement, about the company that is in negotiations to purchase the assets from the Hoagland family and ITV3, what we should understand and give a lot of credence to is the fact that Goldman Sachs, no matter what any of you think of Goldman Sachs up here, a leading financial institution in the world, also a very credible venture capital group, has indeed thoroughly vetted this, this company, has thoroughly vetted this company, and would not back this company if they were not capable of doing what they've set out to do. Now, does that guarantee success? Of course not. But we need to realize that when very, very credible and very, very large financial institutions vet and back a company, that should give us confidence. We know we can't do it. We know that our right to repurchase the assets is only as good as our ability to find someone in the private sector who can actually monetize the asset. So, we should actually grasp the opportunity to, to have someone want to build this out. The other comment that I would make is that I understand that the large portion, a large part of this whole project originally, this $29 million project, was to serve the underserved, the low-income communities, and I absolutely embrace that. But we also need to understand that in order to be successful, a business has to have cash flow. And so, I think that a company that takes this over should put an emphasis on serving areas that will readily embrace their product and provide the cash flow that will then allow the company to more rapidly fill in the, the lower-income neighborhoods. So, those are my only comments, but I really do want to just thank all of you for all of the hours and hours and hours. I can't even imagine the time that you've put in on this, and I really appreciate it. But I, I just want to say that if, if, if the venture capital company named, and Goldman Sachs is backing this company, I don't know why on God's green earth we would not take that recommendation.
Eric?
Charlie's talked enough. Go ahead, Eric.
So, I, I want to reiterate what Mike said, and thank you for your diligence and your work. However, I can't help but remember another company called Gigabit Squared. And Gigabit Squared sure fit a pattern, a profile, that's very similar to this company. There were a bunch of guys who were well-connected in the finance industry, were able to put together venture capital, but totally screwed up the enterprise. And as a matter of fact, there was one memorable entry in GeekWire that said, Gigabit Squared is turning into a saga that's perhaps more aptly titled Gigabit Screwed. So, the smart guys with a lot of money don't always use it, invest it wisely. But the, but, that being said, I guess I believe, based on these conversations, that there are enough safeguards in here that if this company turns out to be total screw-ups like Gigabit Squared, that we will be delayed in our implementation of broadband throughout the community, but at least we won't be seriously damaged. So, on that, on that basis, I, I will, I, I think I'm inclined to support, support you.
Charlie?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mike for his comments on behalf of the committee. It is a lot of work, and it's pretty tricky. This is all being done essentially with no staff, though we do have a hired finance person and to run our books, and we have legal counsel. Those are our primary expenses of the group. The, the one thing to counter what Eric has said is that you need to understand that Countrywide is buying a functioning, working company with a video and telephone and internet service, you know, provider. They're a, a functioning company, and they do a really good job. As one of their customers now for several months, it's totally reliable service, you know, and, and it works. They're keeping every front, everybody from their general manager, Brian Olson, down. And so, you know, basically, they're, they're bringing in their, think of it as a new management team being brought in who also happened to own the new, own the company. But everybody from Brian Olson down is the same. So, the day-to-day operations are in good hands. It's what they will bring in terms of new marketing, new investing, and new thinking to expand this thing out and really get us the fiber to the home that we want. So, that's, you know, that's where we're after, and it's really a shame that it's taken us this long to get these negotiations down. But we, we got off on a wrong start through no fault of our own. But now, we're back on track. We have a loss this construction season, which is a real shame.
I have a question. Does the video part, is that installed in any part of their system? Because it's not installed here.
I didn't hear the end of it.
The video part, is that working in any part of ITV3's system, like in?
As I understand it, it is, and that's all part of it.
But just not here, but in other places?
No, it works here. I'm a customer.
I'm a customer?
Yes, you can, yeah. Diane and I are both customers, and, and you can order video. The other thing about the, the dozen or so neighborhoods that were B-top, the grant-funded neighborhoods, those all can be built very easily. If you have, if you, if you live in one of the B-top communities and you want fiber to the home, it's very easy, because the fiber is already outside, running up and down the parkways. So, for ITV3 to go in, they just have to drop a line out to the street where the fiber exists. And so, for them, it's basically, you know, in those, in those neighborhoods, you can order and, and get installed much, much quicker than a neighborhood who doesn't have the fiber rings up and down your, up and down your right-of-way. So, so, like I said, we have, we have essentially, you know, 14 to 16 neighborhoods that anybody who moves into those neighborhoods can hook up just by simply getting a drop from the street to your house, be it the dozen or so that were already built, or the four in Urbana that had, that were built last year.
So, just sort of a couple of other questions, comments, just to, to put into perspective. In many instances, as we see these public-private partnerships popping up, they have key selling points, like, you know, they really feel good to the community and get a lot of buy-in from people, like making sure that low-income areas or impoverished areas are going to be hit. People are going to have access, and they're going to be connected and all this stuff. So, I didn't follow this very closely, so some of it's somewhat new to me. The grant-supported areas, were the low-income areas, the grant-supported areas?
Yes.
Right? And so, all of those targeted low-income areas, did the build-out and connections take place? Are they to the goals of the project, the original project? Or there's still some that are not?
It was built out, and the, and the.
But the connections to the houses, though?
Yes.
If they wanted it.
Right.
Residents wanted it connected.
The criteria there was that the neighborhoods had to, what was it, Mike?
Forty-hundred percent or less broadband adoption.
Yeah, but what was it? There was a criteria on, on, on Department of Commerce census on.
It was, the Census Block Group had to have less than 41% broadband adoption back in August of 2009, when we did the door-to-door surveys.
So, basically, they had to be low-income areas and without connectivity. And that's, those criteria were the criteria for us in Mike's design originally of the, of the original proposal for creating those neighborhoods. So, so, and that's what made it more attractive for us with a social conscience to be able to then approach a private partner, because the most difficult neighborhoods to connect had already been connected.
If I could, if I could add to that answer. Did all of what you would consider low-income neighborhoods get connected? No, because of that, there was this little bit of a weird formula about existing connectivity. So, some neighborhoods, I think the Learman neighborhood, for example, is not in there. Okay, that's not to say.
Silverwater areas, none either.
There's another, yeah, there's several areas of the communities that are not connected, okay? And it could very well be that if we want them connected over the next five years, we'd have to subsidize it in some way, or, you know, our. we'd have to subsidize it in some way, or, you know, or come up with another grant or something like that. Nothing, there's nothing stopping us from doing something like that.
Well, when you say subsidize, I think that Goldman Sachs makes enough money to subsidize stuff, so, um, and maybe, I don't know, Hickory River could add some too. The, um, we, what about an affordable rate, like you do affordable housing? I don't know. I mean, I just think that if we're talking about this company is vetted by top-notch institutions that have global respect, and they have tons of money to spare to pay people to do really expensive speeches and stuff, then they can definitely, um, definitely, they could possibly, um, help, uh, with the funding or the rate that they give to Countrywide so that we could do some affordable rates for people who are in low come, low-income areas. But I think it's something that should be talked about during the negotiations or something like that. So I just thought I'd throw it out there. We don't, I guess we don't have to rehash it. Mike and I can debate a little bit later over Goldman Sachs.
No, but one of the things that, uh, Countrywide has committed to is to make a contribution of, I think it's $50,000 a year, to the Community Benefit Fund, which was created by the consortium. And the purpose of the Community Benefit Fund, in part, is to develop means for digital inclusion.
Yeah, and I know, and I've been talking to people in the community about that, um, community grant or that...
Community Development Fund.
Community Development Fund that hasn't gotten to the community yet, or there's still some money being held because it's not getting to buy the computers it was supposed to buy. But I guess that's a conversation we could have here in a little way. I intend to bring it back up at a later time because somebody's holding the money up in that fund.
I can show you the, but it's in the budget right now for the coming fiscal year. And, uh, currently, $150,000 is in the Community Benefit Fund from the three years of existence. And, uh, so theoretically, we'll get five more years under this new MOU. Frankly, there's just simply not been the time to get this done because we've been sidetracked, uh, with this, this negotiation for the past six months.
But see, that's, that's the point that I'm saying, that just like in this, and most other situations, the social consciousness of this, the importance of this, you got $150,000. You got people going through all different types of stuff in the community, violence in the community. You got 150 grand that was set aside for a specific purpose, and now we don't have time to do it. That's just not a very solid answer, in my...
Part of it is, the not-for-profit who receives this money hasn't had any staff. It's all been volunteers like Paul and Mike and Charlie and the others on the UC2B board, all of whom, uh, obviously have other jobs. So it's part, you know, it's part of the newness of it.
We're talking about prioritizing, though. The other stuff is getting done. Why would this be put on the back burner? I mean, if, if everything's got to get done, then everything's got to get a certain amount of time to get everything done.
The network's, the network's not being built right now. That's, that's the bottom line. There's nothing happening right now to expand the network. It's being run by ITV3. It's being run well by ITV3. New customers are being brought on where fiber exists, but, but there is...
That's a little bit of a separate conversation. What you brought up, what I was addressing was the Community Benefit Fund. You guys said they'd go put another $50,000 into it. You said it's 150,000 that's been sitting in there, and from my understanding, that money was supposed to be given to different organizations within the community so people could have computers to match with the access that we have now given them. So just because the access and the build-out is not going on, that doesn't mean that money cannot be spent giving people access, uh, or buying the computers and putting them in places in these low-income areas or where they're supposed to be to help with that connectivity. That has nothing to do with that $150,000 that's in the community grant, uh, block, uh, the community fund. Nothing at all. I don't know. Mayor, Bill?
Uh, is there a plan for who's going to run the $150,000?
Yeah, they're pointing at me, yeah.
Charlie's...
We have lost three members of the board in the last month. Uh, and so the, the lead member running the Community Benefit Fund and developing the expertise on that has, uh, just left the board, and his role is going to have to be taken over by somebody else.
So you're looking for new people?
Uh, we've got, we, the, the board has been completely, you know, three new people have been appointed to the board, one of whom hasn't even started yet, uh, the replacement for John Gant. And so, uh, this is sitting there. It's very close to being ready to go out there. Uh, somebody just simply needs to pick up what Eric had, Eric on the board had, had developed with, uh, his group and, uh, run with it. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can, in fact, get, I'm, I, I share your frustration. You're absolutely right, Aaron, that we should have had it done. But again, uh, there's only so much time by the volunteers to get it done.
The reason I was, uh, hesitating to answer is I was on the original board, uh, but I was then off for two years. And so I've just rejoined, and only, this is my first month back, so I'm trying to get back up to speed.
Thank you.
Bill?
Um, yeah, aside from the Community Benefit Fund, you also mentioned, um, just subsidizing or helping people get low-cost access where, where it's possible to connect. I think the, um, Countrywide did mention some program that they were going to try to participate in or expand on. I don't know if it's a federal program or some kind of low-cost access program. So that, that idea was in there, and I think, um, last time we talked about this, there was somebody in Comcast in the audience, and not to push a competitor, but they do offer like a $10 a month or some, some really affordable plan for anybody, I think, that has kids in the, um, free or reduced lunch program. Um, so that there, there are some options out there. And to try to, um, put another little positive spin on this, I'd, I'd much rather seen, uh, be seen a company coming, you know, taking what we gave them and doing something with it and coming back and saying, "We'll sell it back to you for 8 million dollars," than I would, I would rather see that than have a company say, "Here, take it back." So I, I think it's probably better now than it was. Um, so I, you know, I think, uh, they've added some value to it, and, and hopefully we'll, we'll just go on from here and get more people connected.
All right, and my, as the chair, can I say call the question, or does somebody else have to do that? I don't even know what we're, what the recommendation is.
I'll, I'll make the motion here to move ordinance number 2016-758 to counsel without a recommendation for approval, just simply to see what happens between now and, uh, August 1st.
And I'll second.
So it's been motioned by Charlie, second by Dennis. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none with the, uh, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
And then the second ordinance?
No, no, you get it, you get it. It's an either-or.
Oh, either-or, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I put them, I, I put them on the agenda, uh, what, uh, last week because I didn't know where we were going to end up. So depending on where we end up, I would have recommended one over the other.
So there's a motion to, uh...
If you don't vote on the other one, it just dies because it doesn't move forward.
Oh, we, you don't want just both of them to go to council?
No.
No recommendation, just so they're both sitting there?
No, because there's probably going to be yet a different resolution. As long as the subject's on the, uh, agenda, you've meet the Open Meetings Act requirement. You don't have, frankly, you don't have to list titles of ordinances. We do that as our custom in practice. So I'm sure I will have a different ordinance to you, I'm hoping, uh, before July 29, after which I won't be available for a while.
All right, so, um, I'll read that we have ordinance number 2016-07059. Uh, ordinance waiving right of the first refusal and granting ITV3 Inc.'s request to assign cable franchise agreement between City of Urbana ITV3 Inc. dated December 15, 2014, waiver of Urbana's right to purchase ITV3 Inc.'s assets in Urbana and consent to transfer ITV3 Inc.'s cable franchise agreement to Countrywide Broadband LLC or ITV3 LLC.
Okay, y'all.
Seeing that no one moved that, then that motion dies. If there's no further, excuse me? If there's no motion, then there's nothing. Nobody wanted to move it. Okay, it's just not there anymore. All right, no, seeing there's no other further business, this meeting is adjourned.